Okay, it's Tuesday, August 28, 2018. Let's call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Minister of Reports received and filed?
The Collector's 2018 property tax sale results. That was held on August 27, 2018.
Commissioner Committee Liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
We got leadership Friday? Guess we got a holiday Monday. Cool. That's about it. Well, we do, John, not you.
I think all I know is the admin meeting that got moved to next Tuesday.
I gotta meet with one of our city councilmen tomorrow. Health Department and CAP Region's doing a stress management program tomorrow. I'm gonna try to come to that. Thursday's United Way kickoff luncheon. Tuesday, we got a country ham breakfast here for my award-winning country ham, Blue Ribbon.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday at eight.
Okay.
So we might want to move that admin meeting if you'd like.
Again?
Well, unless we want breakfast, Dan, it's okay.
I think we need to go to a fitness club and have these meetings all over.
Christie can lead us in exercise.
I didn't say I was going to. I just said we should.
Okay, Commission Comments, Bids and Contracts. So Source Approval 2018 SS-06 Cirker Service Upgrade.
The server upgrade ad ran on August 12 uncontested, so we are looking for approval for that purchase this morning.
This is for the CAD upgrade? How much was that for?
Can you recall? It was about $15.
Fifteen? Thirteen. Thirteen, okay. You guys good?
I think it's like 12 something.
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the purchase for the Cirker Service Upgrade.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna postpone the natural gas renewal. Where are we?
I move that we sign the sole source advertisement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gonna postpone the natural gas renewal. MDT grant award.
There's a grant of, um, sorry, police chiefs. Three, three.
It's three what, John?
MDT's, mobile data terminals and computers.
So this is the award or the application?
The award.
Okay.
Grant award amount $6,955.18 per unit, including installation.
I guess I'm lost on our agenda.
The MTT grant award.
I don't see it.
The third item? No bids and contracts.
All right, good. I move that we sign the MDT grant award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. EMPG Grant Award.
Yes, this is our annual award. We finally received the paperwork for it, so it's approval from the commission to accept that award. This year, we're appropriated $134,000, $152. That's a 50% grant, so our part is 67,426. About a $5,000 increase from last year. That's the operation doesn't work as it may as it may.
Okay.
Good.
Good?
Yeah, good.
I move that we sign two copies. I move that we sign the EMPG Grant Award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accurate Control Maintenance Agreement.
Yeah, that's gonna take a while.
So Accurate Controls is what we've had for our security electronics in the past. We've had some issues with them. We made contact with them and told them some of the issues we're having is mostly with our locks. The system itself, the security electronics is another issue altogether. The problem was every time we had a lock issue, everybody would point at each other. So we met with Accurate Controls. They've actually have contract subcontracted with a lock company from Kansas City, and it raises our-
Door company?
Yes. Yes, it's a door company, I'm sorry. So it raises it from $40,000 a year to $74,000 a year. So the Design One is the name of the lock company. They actually get $34,000 of this. But out of that $34,000, $12,000 of it is hardware. So they'll have the hardware on hand, so if something goes down, they can come down, replace it, and it's minimum time that we're down. And then they'll reorder that part. And then according to the contract, if we get out, if we say we don't want to do it no more, they give us that $12,000 in hardware. So I'm willing to go one more year with them, because you know, it's no secret that I had some problems with Accurate Control, but it seems like they're really trying to make a good fourth effort, and we are working better with them. So hopefully with the communication we have now, it'll make the system better. So I'd ask that you sign the Accurate Controls with the money involved.
Yeah, we talked about it. It's gonna be cheaper than putting it out to bid and replacing it, which is the other option if this doesn't work, but it sounds like they're making a good faith effort.
They are making a good faith effort, and it's two-edged. We're communicating better with them, too. So it's a two-edged sword.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Just be a transfer coming probably, huh?
I would say.
Maybe.
Maybe, okay. I move that we sign the Accurate Control Maintenance Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Replacement and Stormwater Project, project number 2018-503-1 and 2018-203-1.
Okay, thank Eric sent you all the bid tabs. We received 10 bids on this project. They ranged from $257,000 to $810,000. The parent load on this was S&amp;A Equipment and Builders. It's a portion of a company that we had worked with previously, that we had some issues with. We had quite an extensive discussion with them about those issues, as well as we called some of their references. They did some work in Boone County. We talked to their representatives, and they said that they did a good job for them with minimal problems or issues. So we're recommending award to S&amp;A Equipment and Builders in the amount of $257,575.99.
Had some conversations with Eric about several of the bidders, and I think we addressed all the concerns that I had, so.
I'm fine with it. We did have issues before, but went through and checked on those.
Good.
Good.
I move that we award the Sleepy Hollow Estates to S&amp;A Equipment and Builders. You got a contract?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. State Data Center MOU.
We're gonna need to either amend the motion or have a new motion here, so.
Do the motion for a contract?
Well, we need to sign the contract.
Yeah.
I move that we sign the contract with S&amp;A Equipment and Builders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. State Data Center MOU.
Hi, this is our annual renewal with the State Data Center, so we can access the main frame to be able to provide birth and death certificates for our clients. There's no increase in the transaction fee from DHSS from last year.
Is that what you emailed us yesterday or the day before?
I think maybe it was Friday.
Oh, good. That could look even worse.
Right. That's okay.
You just said this morning.
No, then I couldn't have.
Yeah, I looked through it, and I didn't know if there was an increase in it, so that's what the only question I had is what the difference was.
Yeah, no difference.
Okay.
So this is with DHSS?
Mm-hmm. And Jill did look at it and approve it.
I move that we sign the MOU with DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any unfinished business? New business, Council Payable Review?
I'd ask for approval of a Council Payable Pending Review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing for setting 2018 tax levy.
Do not attach that information. Did you not attach the information on that?
Um, I had it last week, so I didn't attach it again this week.
Okay, it's fine.
Again, this is just the public hearing time. Open the public hearing if anybody has anything to say, otherwise we can close it and approve the levy.
So you need to open the public-
I need to open, yeah. I'm still saying that. Do we have anybody here to, we're opening up the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on it? No. Maybe we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of 2018 tax levy.
And you have two different levies, one for general revenue and one for public works. As we discussed last week, my suggestion is that you have public works levy at the .2725 and then the general revenue at .0707. If you have any questions about it, or otherwise we have to, you guys have to sign a form that goes to the state auditor and then, as does every other taxing jurisdiction, so that we can get the tax bills ready so where you can send those out.
Okay. So Larry's the one that fills everybody, right? Okay. He's not up here to defend himself. That's even better. But overall, it's gonna be lower.
The general fund is lower, because there's a 60% rollback because of the sales times that you guys implemented back, I think, 2008. So general revenue is lower. Road and Bridge will move up a little bit, and it's basically just for new construction. It would go from 2716 to 2725.
You guys good?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Can we do all this at once, or do we need to do it separately?
You can do both of them, just as long as both of them are in the same ancient.
I move that we set the general revenue tax levy at .0707 and the Road and Bridge tax levy at .2725.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Health Department to discuss services offered by the Shriners.
So as you know, we're getting this fabulous new building with all kinds of space, and we've started some partnerships with other service organizations in the community, and then I was approached by, actually Dave's called me, because we know he comes to help partner a lot, for dust certificates, not for other things, and-
Congratulations, you're all living so far.
So he approached me as part of the Shriners to see if we'd be interested in a partnership with them also, and we do have some extra space, and of course, the services they offer would be very beneficial to the community, especially kids. So I thought it would be a worthwhile partnership for us to explore, and invited them to come today to talk to you about it more.
Great.
So I'm Dave Clark. I've lived in this area for all my life. I'm 61. I know a lot of people in here, and I think most of them will give me good references.
We're classmates.
What we would ask is, after talking to Christie, who you're very lucky to have, she was very receptive and gave us a nice tour of the building. We would like one room to consolidate two programs, one being the Mo chip for lost children identification, and then the other would be for Shriners Hospital screening. The good news is, we're not asking for any money. The only thing we would ask is the room. We'll keep it clean. We'll behave. We'll, we'll do whatever Christie says we need to do.
Smart.
We do have insurance. We will furnish it, so that won't be an issue either. And what I've got is Captain Perkins with Highway Patrol, and Ben Dennison is also with the Masonic Lodge and the Shriners Club, and they're gonna take just a minute to kind of explain what Mo chip is, and then the hospital screening.
Yeah, my name is David Perkins, and I am here on behalf of both the Capital City Shrine Club as its current president and the Jefferson Lodge Number 43, ancient free and accepted masons, as a past master of that lodge. Essentially, what the Mo chip program is, it stands for the Missouri Child Identification Program, and it's run by the Masonic Lodge of Missouri. In that process, children come, and there've been several here in the community that I'm aware of and have been to personally and organized, at least to. A child begins at the beginning of the line, if you will. Imagine a line of computers at a table with folks behind them. They start out at the beginning of the line with a photograph and other identifying information, height, weight, eye color, hair color, so on and so forth, other identifying marks that the parents will give to the note taker, and that information is entered into a computer that the next station, then, they're asked to bite down on a bite wing, and then that bite wing is placed into a sealed envelope, which provides not only dental recognition, but DNA for that child. At the next station, their fingerprints taken. And the final station is where all of the information is gathered into one area and then imprinted into a CD format. After the information is imprinted into the CD format, it's, that CD is handed to the parent or guardian, and the information goes away. The Masonic Lodge, we keep no information whatsoever on any of the children that come, other than maybe a tally, so we know how many. I don't have the exact numbers right now, but I know that the count is in the hundreds of thousands of children that have come through the child identification program, and to date, there have been, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, 19 children have been recovered. What this does is give the parent or the guardian a tool, should the child become missing or something like that happen. When law enforcement or other investigators come to the house or make contact, or perhaps the parent can take, they can bring all of this, the CD and the bite wing and all of the fingerprints, everything with them, and it's all in one nice neat package, can hand it to the investigators, and they have all of the information for the child at hand. We recommend that they renew that when possible. What we would want to do with this room, or could do, is set up the equipment to provide that service, not full-time, obviously, because we all have our own vocations that we have to attend to, perhaps on a weekend, maybe at times through the week, where clients at the health center can come in and, given the opportunity, can come down and bring the child through the process to obtain this. Or we could do a situation where we would advertise it and have the public come to, come in and set that up as we do normally.
It'd be neat. We could do it with the Lions, where you could just have a child stay, and they could come in and do yours, and then also get the eye test.
Certainly.
And so do them kind of in conjunction.
I think that would be a great partnership.
And just make it a children's day or something.
That is, that, sir, is exactly what we were hoping for, and it would be, that way they could have benefit from all the programs at once.
And then referrals to the Shriners Hospital for the children. We would have that opportunity as well to do the screenings on-site rather than come back another day, perhaps, or to a different location altogether.
We do understand that we're walking a very fine line here. We are not selling memberships. This costs nobody nothing. There is no cost to anyone for any of the services that we would provide.
The expenses are all paid by either the Masonic Lodge or the Shriners.
And we're not gonna be campaigning for members. We understand that, because if we open that up, you'll have every group wanting to be in there to do the same, so.
And we don't do that anyway. That would be a violation of the law.
Well, I don't think the Lions would do that, or the Cosmopolitan, so it's just-
Yeah, we will not do that.
It's basically just giving your name, and then you give your time.
Yes, sir.
So we talked about the first opportunity being during our open house, and then we could set up other opportunities, but I think Health Fair should be a great time where both of these services could be utilized, and we could give shots also.
Okay.
Well, I might say something about Capital Shrine Club, Mula Shrine Temple. Our club is an ancillary or a subordinate club of Mula Shrine Temple in St. Louis. Mula Shrine Temple is a sponsor's temple to the Shriners Hospital in St. Louis, who most people have heard of, and it's an orthopedic hospital for children under 18 years old that have a disorder, and if they get referred to there and get accepted there, their treatment is at no cost. And so our club tries to further that endeavor by supporting programs, and one of those is our screening clinic, and we've done this before. We get some orthopedic doctor to do the official screening, and some nurse to assist him or two, and that's what we use this room for, is a place to do that screening. And we may be advertised for it occasionally, but if, say, the county nurse department recognized a child that had some orthopedic disorder, they might refer them to us for a screening, and we might get that accomplished. And then if the parent wanted to send the child to the Shriners Hospital in St. Louis, they could do so. None of this is any cost to anybody. It's all a voluntary service, and we look through the professional doctors and nurses to do that screening. We don't do it, we just arrange it. And so it is just a service to the community in the interest of children under the age of 18, and it's no cost to anybody. So that's what we're about.
I think it's great. I mean, glad to partner with you guys and do these kind of things. I mean, I think it's a great service to our community and to the children. My question, what I would have is that, obviously, we'd like to promote that, and I'm sure they would, you would as well, and so, I mean, I'm just a little concerned about signage and, you know, I mean, are you guys thinking that you'd like to put a sign out there somewhere at the, have we talked about that at all?
We did not talk about it.
We did not. I think the most we would want to do would maybe a sign on the door.
Of the room?
Emblem.
Or on our door of the house.
Of the room that we would utilize.
Oh, okay.
Because I don't think there needs to be any external advertisement necessarily.
Okay.
But those things can be discussed, but I don't know if we ever intended to put anything out on a street sign.
I know, I think Cosmos was gonna put something out on a sign that we have out on that, so I just, I mean, treating everybody fair.
Yeah, it might be, I'm sure maybe the Lions might, too, so it might not be, you know how you come into some of the towns and-
Yeah.
Right.
They have a thing with all the different clubs, Rotary and all that. We could-
Well, think about it.
We could possibly do that, too.
We were just trying to be blessed with the opportunity to use something nice at this-
Sure.
I do want an opportunity to ride one of those little cars, so I'd like to drive.
Me, too.
Anytime.
Name the time, we'll reach you there.
I wanna race Jeff.
All right, we'll race.
Okay.
You pick the first half mile, I'll pick the second half mile.
I wanna take, I wanna take the MRAP, I'm gonna race you.
He will not fit in any of the cars.
I don't know if Chris will either. I don't know. No, I think that's wonderful.
Highlighting that it's a big short.
I'm all for it, so.
So do we need approval?
Oh, yeah.
Jill, do you think we probably need to work up an agreement? I mean, they have their own insurance, but-
Something simple.
Okay, we'll work up a little MOU, and then we'll bring it back for approval.
Okay, that'd be great.
We thank you for your time, and thank Christie for her time.
Yeah, thank you all.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks, too, and then let's work on the sign, because I think there should be some recognition and something that would just direct them into the building, so, but that has nothing to do with it. That's just an added perk for you all to-
Yeah.
I don't think, our one door, like, there's double doors coming in, and one has all of our health department stuff on it. I think on the other one, we could probably put the logos of the organizations we're working with, too.
Yeah.
That'd be a good idea, yeah.
Agreement with Sansoussi Ameren Natural Gas Appeals.
You're moving right along. You're doing good.
Morning, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
You got a copy of it?
Yeah, I've got a copy of it, too. This is just a contract to allow Sansoussi, or to cover Sansoussi to be paid for his testimony in anything related to the 2013 remand on the Ameren case.
Okay.
Got all the bugs worked out of that, and I remember we had some emails going back and forth about the max not to exceed amount.
Do what? I'm sorry.
We got everything on that Ameren contract?
Yes, there's a not to exceed amount.
Okay. I went back and forth several times, so, very good. It's not that sheriff causing problems out there again, is it?
Hit the button. Donnie over here to-
Can we tase him?
I was telling him to quiet down. Farz, you know.
Farz, you know.
I'm sorry, Chris.
I don't think there was anything else, just needs your approval or not.
I still don't see the not to exceed amount. I mean, I just see hourly rates.
They should be in there.
Keep going.
Right there. Okay, there you go. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm good.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Yep.
I move that we sign the agreement with, Georgie Sansoussi. That's it.
Oh, okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Updated Personnel Policy Handbook. Yeah, I've been talking, we've got a committee, and none of them are really HR specialists. I'd almost make a recommendation, we bring in somebody who's an HR specialist, meet with our committee, and have them do it right, rather than having a lawyer and an engineer and having a bunch of people who really aren't HR do our handbook, and that's just my idea, but.
Okay. Is that something that we need to bid, or what, I mean?
Well, the new, I can go, I can look for a consultant, and the new bidding law changes. Nothing, $6,000, put it this way, they eliminated informal bidding, so anything under $6,000 doesn't have to be bid.
Okay.
And I have some sources that I have worked with before who can give me some recommendations.
Okay. What are you wanting to do with it?
Well-
Well, what we were handed, Debbie just obtained from some consultant she dealt with before, and it was given to me to do a legal review, and I started opening this up, and it was nowhere near ready for legal review. I mean, aside from general entity, and there was stuff we didn't do, and things that should be in individual department or office policy manuals and this. I could, in fact, I sent you all that draft that has all my electronic comments. I had over, would you say, Aaron, probably over 60 comments on that?
Zero.
And extensive editing. So then I, Aaron, Eric Landmark, Christie, and Shannon Kleeg Vermaes all graciously agreed to serve on a committee with me, and they've all looked it over. We're still waiting for Eric. Eric's been really busy, and he said he could look it over in the next couple of weeks. But, I mean, I think Sam's idea of actually bringing in a professional. HR has its own bachelors and graduate degrees, along with general and specific national certifications that require continuing in it, so there's a lot of expertise there that none of us have.
And I think they could still be with the committee, because I'm sure we have some things that are probably unique to us, but- And I think they could still be with the committee, because I'm sure we have some things that are probably unique to us, but.
Well, and those, they've all gone through and they have comments and things they've seen too. So we could all share that. But I think probably having a professional to guide us. And maybe even coming up with something that's a lot better than what we were handed.
That's just my recommendation.
Well, we've got to do something with it. I mean, so, we either, we either need to update it or we need to throw it away and not have one at all. So. I'm serious. If you have a policy manual, you either follow the policies or you throw it in the trash and you have no policies. And so you just, I mean, if you don't follow the policies, it does no good, so.
Well, and the current one we have is old. And this one we were given was one that Debbie just got somewhere. And it's, you have to have certain things in there. And we have things such as grievance procedures that need to be in there, ADA, sexual harassment, and all kinds of discrimination language. And if you don't have a policy manual with that, you can get, that's a huge liability. I think what Sam's saying is, let's bring in a professional.
I'm just saying, these things are written every day and those sound like generalities that could be added. I'm trying to find what you had sent us.
Well, it was sometime back, it's probably a few months ago.
Okay, I think I remember seeing it, but I don't remember. I thought it was stuff that we could catch and make some changes to somewhat.
And we can continue on doing what we're doing. Just, you know, we're waiting on Eric.
Waiting on Eric.
That's why he's busy.
Yeah, Larry, come on, let Eric.
He's not here, awesome. Okay, I did find something on the.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that everybody, you know, they have other jobs too, but they're not necessarily HR experts. So if you just bring in somebody just to help, to put together the book, they're not gonna.
Well, but it's, the book's an ever-changing document. It never, it's never complete. It's a work in progress, so. Anyway, I don't care if we look at, see what that cost is going to be. I mean, we got to move on this and it just keeps dragging on and we're not getting anything done, so.
So which part's been the problem? I mean, this one here that I'm looking at now is a thousand and four sections. And I don't know if that's the one that.
I don't know.
Just to refer to or using as a tool? Or are we going to completely change ours? Or what, I mean, why do we want to change it all?
This is an entirely different document. And.
Well, the main thing is, is because we have stuff in there that doesn't need to be in there, like extended or leave that's not approved. And things that need to come out that we don't even offer.
This is a completely different document from the current one.
The current one was issued by an attorney through MAF. And that's how we initially started with that way back. It was written by an attorney and shared with all the other counties. Since then, we've updated it as we've needed it. And as the county has grown, we've updated it as best we could. What this one was, is when we took over EMS, they, we hired an HR consulting group to help bring all those employees over from Capitol Region to us. So in that interim, I asked that lady who was the HR consultant, she was out of Kansas City, to look at our personnel manual to make sure we had everything in there that we needed for bringing that whole department over, because it's a different world than we were used to. And also, so, I asked her how much it would take for her to update our current one. And that's the one that's out there now that this group, a committee, is looking at. She did do that, kind of, and me and her went through section by section, got it together. It has been a long time ago, probably four years ago. When we took over EMS, it's been sitting there. But since then, you know, always, my biggest thing is, there is a lot of legal in it. I mean, obviously, employees can use it against you, or we can help educate our employees too. So it's an ever-changing document, but legally too, it's ever-changing, you know? Because they change the FMLA rules, they change all the other rules all the time. We've always had one that basically helped all departments. And I know we've grown a lot, that each department, and as a first-class county now, they have their own manual, they have their own things for their department, which Jill was talking about, just for them. But we still need an overall one to help us, you know, for how we pay overtime, how we, you know, spell it all out for people. I mean, we can go and have Jennifer look at what an hourly rate would be to have an HR person come, you know, look at what we have. And if they would recommend starting over, you know, things have changed so much since this started four years ago, that maybe we should start over. I mean, it's up to you guys, but to me, it's a lot of legal, you know, make sure that we're doing it right. So that's why it went to that direction.
We'll take a look at it and see what it's going to cost. It's not going to hurt. I can always vote no then. I've been saying yes a lot lately, so, about do for no. So, I think go ahead and get some pricing on it, find out. Look into it. I think that's going to be probably the biggest thing. I mean, are you going to reinvent the whole book? I don't think we need to.
Well, but it may be, may be easier and cheaper to just redo the whole book and try to piecemeal ours, so. I mean, somebody may have a book that they could take sections out of it.
Say, if I redo the whole book, they're going to come in there and they're going to change the name in it, so.
We're going to put pictures in for you too.
I disagree that if we don't have this one, we either have it or nothing. So I'd say what we have is better than nothing, so. And then, yeah.
Everybody works with other counties, you know? Counties are obviously the same across the, a little bit different. First class, maybe we'd stick with first-class counties. See if they have theirs done outside, if they've done it inside, kind of thing, we can check that too.
Well, in defense of doing it, I don't want to spend the money on it, it's probably the biggest thing. But we can have you all spend hours upon hours on it and waste y'all's time doing it. Or we can spend time having somebody else do it, so. It's going to come down to the cost. I just, I don't know which part you all are talking about changing necessarily.
I can resend it to you, you can see my comments.
Was that on the one that was sent to me?
I sent this to all of you a couple of months ago.
It's comments on our existing handbook?
No, on this one that Debbie got a few years ago.
Yeah, I saw it. It, I don't know, it looks so generic to me that I don't know if it's better than what we have.
That's why we've been working a lot on it.
And that's kind of where I was going with it. I'm not sure why we're trying to change everything we have, we just make the changes where it's, we have deficiencies or problems and address them, you know, if there's some kind of.
Some things probably aren't even legal anymore or pertinent. And then you've got other things that we don't have in it that have just need to cover. Cover anything that could come up.
We need to get it corrected or else we're going to get sued because we have wrong information in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Or not appropriate information in there, so. So let's, let's take a look and see what maybe an HR person would cost and maybe look at some different services there and see what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm fine looking into it.
Okay. We're keep moving, come on.
You got two yeses, move.
I don't think, do we need, we don't need a motion.
No.
Architects Alliance for Professional Services.
Come on, Kerry, you got to sit up here in the hot seat with me. Don't run off. Debbie, don't scoot away from me, Debbie. So, we've talked about the interstitial area, about, about building it out for extra space. We've kicked that idea around, but really, until we can put a number on how much that's going to cost, we really can't go forward into planning to see what it's going to cost, if it's feasibly, if it's feasible to do so. So, well, my recommendation is, is that we sign it, we go ahead, I have an agreement here. She has not seen it yet, so I would ask that you approve this pending her approval of the agreement. But that we will go ahead and allow Architects Alliance to, to sit down and come up with some accurate numbers. And I'm going to let him talk, because he, because when we talked, he spoke about it very much, a lot better than I did, so. But, you're on, Kerry.
Okay. The empty floor, interstitial floor, was really kind of a bonus in the last project. We weren't planning to build that. It was due to the topography of the site. We had always planned to go one floor on top, overdesigned the building and putting school one floor on top. So, the commission at that time decided, because of the topography, we realized we could fit an empty floor. There's such a drop, I think forty feet from Hyde to McCarty. And so we have an empty floor in there. It was about one point seven, one point eight million dollars extra at that time to build that shell space. So that's what that's worth, and taken off of if you wanted to expand the building vertically. There's three sections, as we look at it, one is twenty thousand square feet. That's the exact footprint of the housing below. We're sure you're not going to build exactly the same thing. There's probably different classifications and uses, regulations have changed or whatever, but. So we need to work on a floor plan that would be below that. East of that, on the south side, is another five thousand square feet. We've talked over the years with, with the commission, we've talked, judiciary's called about it. So ideas about work release, we've had, there's another two thousand square feet, call centers come up about that. So the point is, there's about twenty-seven thousand square feet unfinished in that floor that was built by, you know, back in two thousand and eleven. By the way, it amazes me that it's two thousand and eleven, we actually started the project in two thousand and two. That's the job number it had in our office. And, starting with the commission then, under Bob Jones and Sheriff Haymeyer. It's gone through Haymeyer to Brooks to Kempker to Wyden. I can't remember who the guy that runs it now is.
Nobody else can.
So, we, we would recommend a facility assessment. We were the architect of record, the Architects Alliance was. We don't hesitate to bring on expertise to have the best team. The detention or corrections architect we had at that time was HMN. But Steve Davis was the main person we worked with. He's very well-known in some part of the country. He works for all, all kinds of counties in Missouri, Kansas, Colorado, Iowa. We would recommend bringing him on board for just the expertise of how to get to the classifications needed. Also, the regulations that, that guide jails and then to do a double check on cost projections by our office. We would be the source of responsibility, but we would develop a floor plan, a report, and we would have narratives from the other disciplines. There's no need to design mechanical systems for a future project, but we would want to know how they plan to. We'd have a narrative from the mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, structural. So that you would have with you a guide to move forward with, including a floor plan, how the other systems would be expanded. I know there's extra electrical capacity, extra mechanical capacity. We need to extend those into the new areas. So that's what we're recommending that you do. It's work you would do anyway if you decide to finish that floor. But this would be the least amount, we would say, to get you to a decision point of whether you want to move forward with the project. Any questions?
Approximately what's the cost for you to do this?
Sure, well, it's not just me.
Well, I know.
Yeah, we, we, what we did was we calculated the hours. And the total is about fifty-seven thousand dollars. It would be, the Architects Alliance is the architect of record. It would be Steve Davis is the detention architect. It would be Henderson engineers as supporting engineers. Now, keep in mind, they're only doing narratives. The most of the work would be architectural. We, when we, when we added those hours, we were pretty pleased with the numbers. I think part of it has to do with our billing rate here is different, is lower than, than larger cities, larger communities. This study typically takes between one and one and a half percent of the cost of construction to get this information to you. And we came in at point nine, so we were pretty happy with the hours that we came up with.
The thing I like about it, if we do it or not, it gives us a, a good idea on how much money it's going to cost. But the other thing I like about it is, is in the letter, it explains that he's going to do a complete assessment, reassessment of the current facility now. So not only, not only will he, you know, speak with you guys and find out what exactly you want to do with it, but he's going to go down and speak with my staff and talk about what, what their expectations of the new facility would be. Because I tell you right now, we're going to need more behavioral health space. We got one. Whenever we built this, whenever we started designing it, you know, like I was saying before, in two thousand, was it two thousand and fifteen? I think we had a hundred and thirteen commits, mental commitments in Cole County. And right now, about two weeks ago, we're at three hundred and nineteen. So the behavioral health is an increasing issue. And the better cells that we have, the behavioral cells that we have, we'll put some of these individuals in for their safety as well as ours. So that would be something that we want to look at, building into the new, the new project. So, I'm not saying that we do this now. I'm not saying that we do it next year. I'm saying that we need to go ahead and have this study done. We need to go ahead and spend this fifty-seven thousand dollars so we have a better idea on how much and how long it's going to take to be able to do so.
I might, I did forget to mention, inevitably, in doing this, going through this process, we call it architectural programming. The first meeting would be with the commission to find out, you know, what you expect to get out of the study, any big picture guidelines you can set. Then we would go over to the sheriff and staff, gather as much information as we could, work on recommendations. And then we would come back to you guys. Of course, you're welcome to any of the, the interview meetings as well, they can get pretty boring. But it's, it's basically a process. Inevitably, out of that process, there will be some, some smaller term things that you, we identify in the building that you might want to adjust even now. I know there's been talk about the monitors in the control center, are they high, are they low? We went through that process in the design process, but there may be some small projects you want to just handle now. And that would be part of this recommendation, short-term recommendations and long-term for the build out of the twenty-seven thousand square feet.
So does this kind of look at various options as to how to build that out, possibly build it out in phases?
Yes, sir. Thanks for bringing that up. There would be a construction phasing plan, again, that you all would need to weigh in on that, you know? And there'd be a budget with each phase. The other thing is, the building is somewhat, you know, it was designed in anticipation of these. So it was designed, we may be able to lighten the load structurally, for example, depending on the type of cell we use. Or whether they're larger cells, whether there's mezzanine. So, we know we have the capacity in the building for the scenario that's over there, but there may be other cost-saving measures we could do. Or, again, different classifications. And that's where Steve Davis comes in, interviewing the jailers.
And the phases that we're talking about, there's three main sections down there. There's the footprint for the, for the, what we have currently right now. Then we have what, and I'm just going to say, where the work release program we were talking about. And then there's a two thousand square feet up that we, there's been talk of a nine-one-one center. There's been talk of a courtroom there. There's been, I mean, there's just all kinds of discussion. You would still have to build, for instance, that when you build out the, the lower level of the jail, it would all have to be completed at one time. You would not be able to do half of it and then come back later. You'd have to do it all at one time, so. Just for the sheer logistics, because there is a, and you and I talked about this, remember, we were down there, we wondered what section of the, that have to take out to put stuff in? It's on the west side. So, if you're looking at it on the west side, there's no way that if we built half of that, and then while we have prisoners there, we knock that out again and build more onto it, can't do that. So, it'd have to be a done, one-time deal, so.
I might, I might mention, in addition to the initial cost of construction, that we would do an estimate on, the bigger cost is operations over the life of the building. So that's included in the study, operational costs as well as staffing costs. I know that, I'm sure that the sheriff has an idea of what it takes to, to run it. But we do a second check and give recommendations on the number of full-time, the number of FTEs required to operate that, that facility, so.
Maybe look at the air conditioning systems. For replacement.
You can bear to that for a second.
Oh, Greg, to keep those going forever.
Yeah. I don't want to take away Greg's job security, but a little bit is not always best.
So would there be some, I mean, obviously, you'd have to kind of look at some of the construction costs. I mean, you wouldn't do the design necessarily, but you'd have a pretty good idea of what you would build in order to give you a cost.
You bet. I mean, we could go away and have a, have a plan without your input.
Right.
And without the staff's input, but we really need that staff input to make it appropriate. And I guarantee you, it's not going to be exactly like what's upstairs. There's going to be some changes in different services or classifications they're going to want to do. But we know that everything under consideration fits in that twenty-foot floor-to-floor envelope that was designed in the original construction. There's twenty feet in there, so you'd have a floor plan plus mezzanines in that space.
Okay.
Anyway, I'd ask that we go ahead and, it's professional services, and so I would ask that we go ahead and agree to spend that fifty-seven thousand dollars. that we go ahead and agree to spend that $57,000 pending her approval of the agreement so we can go ahead and start this process.
So what do you, what do you think the, obviously, cost to build it, cost to operate Where's the revenue going to come from to offset the costs? I mean.
Well, that's another, that's another conversation we can have, but, you know, I'm thinking, we were, you and I were actually speaking with Kerry, and we came up with a rough $4 million, let's say, to build it out. We have that contingency right now to be able to, to be able to build this out without having to go back to the public for anything. The trick is, when it comes back to, is how it is actually the, is the staffing of it. And right now, with staffing, it's about $1.4 million a year I have in staffing and jail staff. And of course, that would, it would, it's going to, it's going to be some people, because not only do I have to have continuous staff down in that area, but then we have to talk about moving food up and down the elevator, moving prisoners up and down the area. So there's a lot more aspects to bring into it. If we go with, and it was a rough idea, and until he draws it out to where we can actually see what we're looking at with an additional 40 staff in there, we're looking at another one, probably 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. So can we do it if we go in 2023, revert down to 3/8 cents? Can we do it without it? It's going to be close. But with more federal prisoners, you know, that's going to help us. So the, so what we need to think about is, is the staffing of it. And we really can't give you an accurate staffing number until Architects Alliance comes up with the, with the plan and then also comes back to us and talks to us what his, his thoughts are on the staffing issues.
How many other prisoners are we taking over for other counties right now? Because I know a lot of people aren't set up to handle as many prisoners as they have that they're getting. So not only are we housing our own in the federal, but like Osage and any other county.
Currently, we're not housing for anybody. That goes in spurts. So just like with us, if we, if we build up real big, for instance, we were housing for Green County, wanted its house for them for a while. We had some Boone County, and that's on and off. Boone County sends us down several. But we have, we have right now, today, I think we have 54 federal prisoners in custody. So there's really not a set number. We don't have a set agreement with any other agencies around. But I will tell you, that state of Missouri is going towards regional jails. That's going to happen, be just for the simple reason, it's getting too expensive to run jail facilities. So it's going to go to a, it's going to go to a regional setting.
Yeah, well, that could really be beneficial for us.
It would be beneficial to offset some of the costs that we have currently, that's correct. But, you know, the jail, the Cole County Sheriff's Department, and I'm just going to go out and say EMS probably, because he's over here and I haven't made fun of him in a while, but we are not, we are not designed to make money. I mean, we're never going to make money. What we do is, is we try to go out and find revenue to offset the cost. The $1.2 million that we got in 2017 from federal prisoners, while it sounds like we made $1.2 million, what it did was, my cost would be the same no matter what. So if, currently, if I had 53, I've got 53 federal prisoners, if I let all those 53 prisoners, federal prisoners go, I still got a $1.4 million salary line I got to pay. There's no, it doesn't matter if the federal prisoners are there or not. So by having the federal prisoners there, it offsets the cost to where that $1.2 million doesn't come out of general revenue. So it actually, I mean, it saves the county as a whole, but the sheriff's department is not making money on that. It assists us, it offsets costs by, you know, a lot, but it, we are not, we are never going to make money on that. But we got to keep looking for revenue lines, and we do that. We have the federal prisoners, we have mental health, we're just going to get ready to start with probation and parole, we're going to start having some of their parole violations. So there's, there's several things that we're looking at to try to increase funding for the jail. While still trying to make sure the safety of the jail, to safety and security is utmost.
So I'd like to chew on it for at least a week. I don't know where Jeff sat on it, but anyway, it's a lot of money. I mean, I, I get what you're saying. I mean, yeah, you'd have 1.4 million, but if we're not taking in 1.2 million for federal prisoners, your 1.4 million just got cut because GR don't have that money to fund your salaries.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, it's, they both got to work together. So, I mean, the funding source and the personnel got to go together. So, I mean, I think we'll need it at some point. Obviously, if there's an opportunity to house more federal prisoners or more other counties' prisoners, I think there's probably a bigger opportunity there that would be a more steady source of income. Might not be as much money, but.
The conversation we had with, with the feds about four months ago, I think, there was 163 federal prisoners available for us. So there's definitely more federal prisoners out there for us to take.
Sure. Where are you at, Jeff?
I was waiting to see what Sam said.
Well, he said yes.
Well, no, I don't, I don't know if it's all that bad having, you know, doing plans. We don't necessarily have to implement it.
Yeah, I'm not asking us to implement it.
We've got, we've got the plans and we've got something that we can use.
The problem is, you know, when you're asking how much money it's going to cost to, for staffing, you know, it's the chicken before the egg. I really can't tell you what our staffing is until I can see what the, what it, what it calls out whenever he does his, his staff study. I really can't tell you what the amount of people we're going to need until we do that study and look at what the, how many beds it's actually going to give us down there. It's not, we are not going to have 180 beds in that second facility. Like, we've been planning all along to just drop another 180 beds in there, and I don't think that's going to work for us, because we got to have some more behavioral health cells in there, and those aren't beds, they're just empty cells, but.
I agree. I mean, behavioral health, mental health, I mean, work release, I think that's a program that could, you know, people would actually pay for.
I agree.
So, you know, with pre-trial release services and, you know, we're having some good conversations with our pre-trial committee and probation and parole, I think we're on the right track of figuring out ways to keep the bad people in jail and keep the, you know, the people that aren't real bad, you know, trying to get them out on programs and supervised and stuff like that, so.
Well, they also look at our current facility too and look at ways we can, some of the things we're doing now, which maybe we can change some things, like in our satellite control right now, they're wanting to make some changes in satellite control right now. So those are things that he can, they can look at whenever they're doing their study to see what we can change now to make things a little more efficient in our facility right now.
Sure.
I might add to the, you know, everybody wants to get to the end and see the drawing. That's, that's what we do at the end of a process. The homework that goes into that is vital, because we could have a drawing next week that doesn't include your input, staff's input, and things like that. So the homework is critical to having a, the right floor plan.
Right.
The other thing that was valuable to us in the original jail was working with a guy like Steve Davis that's working for a lot of counties around us and how are they, how are they running their shop or, you know, do they, are they exporting, do they need to export prisoners or whatever? And there's, there's multiple ways to do, you know, intake and handling and stuff like that. So it was really beneficial, I think, to have them on board to tell us what other counties were doing.
So he's communicating with all these counties that have similar space issues or whatever.
That's where he is today.
Right. So anyway, so he'd have a wealth of knowledge from all these county jails, so.
That, he, that's all he designs.
I think it's a good exercise that we need to go through, but I'm not so sure we shouldn't talk about it during budget time, and is there a reason why we're wanting to do it right now as opposed to 19?
Well, well, the difference is, it's got to come out of contingency money. There's, I don't have it in my operation budget. So if we do it at the, if we do it in January of 2019, it's still going to come out of my contingency fund. So it's not going to change where the money comes from. I mean, if you want to wait till we have the talks then, it's going to be the same conversation. The money's not coming out of my operational, I don't have it.
Okay. I think I'd rather talk about during budget time and look at doing it next year. I mean, I think it's a good idea. I mean, we're running into that with, well, the EMS building, it's not really set up the best way, and we thought we were doing them a favor setting it up that way, but we didn't have the right input on that. So I think it is, it's a good exercise that we need to go through.
Well, there again, you know, you've got more personnel, you know, got to have places for them, so anyway, if you have more people in jail, we got to have places for them, so. I'm not saying no, I just, you know, first hearing some numbers today, and obviously, you know, I, you know, do we need it? I mean, it's a big thing, you know. At some point, yeah, we're going to have to have it, so. And then trying to, you know, plan ahead a little bit, you know, where we go from half cent to 3/8s and where does all that come into play? And, you know, if we need to go back to the voters and ask them to continue that half-cent sales tax for law enforcement, so. Anyway, I think it's a good conversation, it's good future planning, so, anyway.
Is there anything additional you need from us?
We'll still get that letter, that agreement, I'll send it over to her so she has it on file.
I don't think so. I mean, obviously, now that we've been in the jail long enough, we know what we don't want to do.
True.
So sometimes that's, that's the pain in building something like that, so.
I'm sorry, it's always one.
Yeah. Anyway, good old low bid. Anyway, no, I appreciate you coming today and talking to us about it, and I think it's a good, good plan, so.
Okay.
So, thank you.
It's 10 o'clock, so we will, but I want to introduce, I'm sorry, Steve, this is our new deputy director of EMS, Steve Moffett, and.
Welcome, Steve.
This is.
Hey, Steve.
All kinds of people. Kristen, you got to watch out for her. Christie's, Christie, she's.
So we're going to plow through the rest of this?
No.
No.
No, we're going to, we're going to, we'll stop here and bring, let the chamber do theirs.
Okay.
And then we will come back to, but anyway, Steve, welcome, and try to calm Matt down a little bit, get him to sleep a little bit.
Had nothing to do with that.
So if you want to stay, you can. If you don't need to stay, it's time to.
If you want to run like hell.
Yeah, you can leave, so, anyway.
I can't tell anybody, I got to calm down.
So, you want me to go get Randy?
Yeah, I'm going to use the loiterer.
I don't think there's any place for me to sign this. Do you want me to be the local health? Hey, Randy, can we, you know how we did with Vick, we do, like about, in about 20 minutes, I mean, do your free session, and then we're just, yeah. Good man. Yeah, good, thank you. No, no, I.
Good, good, yeah, good to see you.
We could charge $10 a head for United Way.
Oh, Sam didn't even know that.
I didn't know that. I wore a suit to church Sunday because we had the bridal show and the hospital, but he wanted to sit for, I said, today is wear a suit to church day. Didn't you see that? These guys barged, so.
Thank you. Good.
Wait a minute, I said each, but whoever gets it is directly relative to how long the presentation takes. Hey, Mary, hey, sorry to make it out to the lighting last night. I got, I got Ryan's email and I didn't think it was like last night. I read it. I didn't know it was Tuesday night already, so.
Good.
What's going on, John?
He's got a wave coming up. Did that already move it?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay, we're going to, we're going to continue on, we're a little after 10:00 AM, but we have the presentation from the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce on Economic Development. And I asked Randy if we could keep it around 20 minutes, so go for it.
It'll be less than that, I promise. Start your timer.
He gets 20, I get 20, and Brian gets 20? Is that how it works? Just kidding. First off, thanks for having us, guys. You know, we believe in the RFP process, we're proud to show our value of our economic development team. I think it's important to realize that our team consists not just of myself, I'm obviously Bill Plank, Chamber Chairman, we have Randy Allen, who's our president and CEO, and we have Brian Bernsketter with RJ Share and Associates. We've put together a pretty good, pretty good proposal, we believe. More importantly, we have several chamber members here. We have several community advocates, we have a lot of great Cole County residents here that have been longtime Chamber supporters. Would any of, anybody like to say anything, any of our supporters? Introduce yourselves. We'll start with Linda. Linda, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Linda McManus, I'm retired, I'm also with the Chamber as an ambassador, every other opportunity that I have, strong.
Thank you.
I'm Lana Trammell, I'm Gamwin, Missouri, and I'm a member of the Chamber. I'm kind of representing my boss, Chip Webb, because he can't be here today, but we work with Randy and Missy and Sean, the Economic Development Group. We also see them work across the state with a lot of other economic development groups that are very well-respected and. We also see them work across the state with a lot of other economic development groups that are very well respected, and we think they're a real help.
Ed.
I don't think he just barged.
Karen Heckler with High Five Communications, also a Chamber Board Member on the Executive Committee.
And Carrie Turchen, Mayor of Mississippi Jefferson.
Rodney Bax, the Providence Bank, a lifetime Cole County resident, and take pride in what our, our, our community does and the road that we see, and I'm a supporter of what the Chamber Commerce has done for our community.
Thank you.
James Dark, Dark Construction, President of the Homebrew Association, and here to support this, I've seen firsthand what the Chamber does with economic development and keeping all our local contractors working.
Thank you.
Sean Saffinfield, Chamber Staff.
Janet Weir, Low Pass Chamber Chairman, and a huge supporter of the Chamber, and I've seen firsthand all the great work that the staff does on behalf of economic development in the entire community.
Captain Schmidt, Chamber Member, and Lord of the Center.
I'm Dana Wackenberg, I'm the previous Chair of the Chamber Board. I think Captain Regent's tagline, "A Better Every Day," kind of fits what we see, like how he developed and going through, is a strong supporter in that. Progressive, proactive, things that we can do to bring good things to the Jefferson City of Cole County, and I think that's one of the possibilities.
Missy Bono, Director of Economic Development for the Chamber, and I'm a strong Chamber supporter as well.
Bill Plank, best Chairman of the Chamber Commerce, board of the Chamber.
I'm Angie Barrow, the Chamber.
Thank you. I, again, I want to thank all of these Chamber members, all these, all these supporters of our community for being here. Oh, sorry.
I'm Bob Miseray, resident of Jefferson City since nineteen ninety-one, office side of Jefferson City since nineteen eighty-two. Throughout that time, working for the state at the economic and community development level, worked closely with the Chamber on a number of great projects, and want to see that relationship continue.
I have Mark, Chamber Member, retired, background Economic Development, key development, hard research, and all that.
Thank you. Ed and Bob, I didn't mean to leave you guys out, I was. That arm's leaning. Good idea. Anyway, we just want to, obviously, thank all these Cole County residents, for that, a lot of these folks are lifelong residents, and they have history here, they know about Cole County, they know about what working together can do. So our team is not just the Chamber staff and Brian, it is the entire community, I want to make that very clear as we go forward. You'll see here a chart, these are, these are hard numbers that we put together. The first thing, first line that I want to point out to you actually is that bottom line that shows that we're under one hundred percent. That under one hundred percent represents employment in our area. Since two thousand, we've actually lost about thirty-five hundred jobs, however, this one shows a loss of twenty-five hundred jobs. Those are not jobs in the private sector, those are jobs directly from the state. We have more than backfilled what those are, and you'll see those numbers later. As we all know, private sector is the key to growth, and that's where we focus. We work with the governments to generate business from the private sector. You'll see our population has grown, our total taxable sales have grown, our county appraised value has grown, total wages have grown, and average wages have all grown substantially over the past little over ten years. Those are trends that we continue to look forward to enjoying.
So what do we want to talk about today is work, continuing to work together as a partnership moving forward. So what we have proposed to you, and again, you have in front of you our, our proposal that we delivered to you on, on the proposal date. We're not gonna go through that, we also have some letters of recommendation in front of you, and then obviously the PowerPoint presentation. So, we do have a complete program, we're not just one slice of the economic development pie. The proposal includes total economic development, total community development, and governmental relations. Again, these are the items in the proposal, business attraction, existing business expansion and retention, community development, small business, entrepreneurship, regional partnerships, governmental relations, transportation, and lobbying. Until two thousand and seven, the Chamber did, our, our Community Economic Development Program did not include all those. Our, basically, our Community Economic Development Plan included business attraction, some community development, and some transportation. So, since two thousand and seven, when the program expanded and we asked you to put more resources into the program, that's what we were able to do. Our experience of our team, we have a combined sixty-plus years of direct professional economic development experience, Missy, Sean, and I. On the governmental relations side, we have a combined experience with Randy Share and Brian Bernskeeter of over fifty years of direct governmental relations experience. And I will say, all of our team members are lifelong residents of Cole County, and we have a deep understanding of this area. So, we're able, in the current program, and hopefully looking forward to the future program, we leverage all of the available resources, the city, the county, the Chamber, and the Chamber has over eight hundred and twenty business and not-for-profit entity members, as well as eighteen hundred total individual members. Our Chamber, through its dues and its event income, adds two hundred thousand dollars a year to the economic development program. So if you look at it, the county currently puts a hundred and fifty thousand in, the city puts a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and nearly every year, we're over two hundred thousand dollars in the program coming from Chamber budget. We also leverage our other Chamber resources. Twenty-first Century Land Investments is kind of the grandchild of the original Chamber Land Investment Company that was created in, in the nineteen fifties, leading to economic development, industrial sites along Industrial Drive, West End out by the fairgrounds, et cetera, et cetera. It's almost too voluminous to talk about what that impact has been over that period of time. Twenty-first Century has, currently has an eighty-acre certified site in the Algoa Industrial Park, and over the past eleven years, the Chamber has contributed four million dollars from this entity that we've invested in land, utilities, planning, project development with the city, county, and Chamber partnership. Civic Progress Committee. Civic Progress is an independent Chamber committee of about sixty businesses now. Over that period of time, since two thousand and one, this, this committee has raised and spent about two hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred thousand dollars for city, county, state ballot issues, community projects, and economic development studies, all with the idea of moving our community forward. So what is, what has been the eleven-year record since two thousand and seven of this enhanced Chamber-City-County Economic Development Program? We, we have developed that Total Economic Development Program that I indicated before. Before two thousand and seven, it was just a shell of an economic development program. That entity has achieved state-certified site designation for the eighty-acre site in Algoa. We have delivered on Project Port, we completed the feasibility study, we delivered the Port Authority application to MODOT, and we actually, in a short timeframe, put together a really substantial build application, which is a federal transportation grant funding. We achieved county-certified Work Ready Communities designation. We have developed the Cole County Enhanced Enterprise Zone, which did not exist prior to two thousand and seven. That has paid big dividends for us in trying to attract and, and retain business in our Cole County area. We developed the Incentive Task Force just after two thousand and seven, and that is, that really is a one-of-a-kind program. No one else that we know of has that, has that committee that looks at all incentives, develops incentive policies, and actually looks project by project at the kinds of incentives that, that the community really wants to put forth when we try to attract business from outside, or when we want to try to expand business. And then we recently achieved an Opportunity Zone Certification for the downtown area. That was a new program in the Trump budget and tax bill, which allowed communities to put together Opportunity Zones to get some special incentives. We hope to take advantage of that in the downtown area, primarily for the MSP redevelopment project. And obviously, during this period of time, we facilitated two major economic development strategic planning processes. In two thousand and six, we had, we completed our first Economic Development Strategic Plan since, I believe, way back in the eighties, maybe? Yeah, Missy's shaking her head. And that was very valuable, that, that kind of focused us on what we needed to do in our economic development program. And in two thousand and ten, we hired tip strategies to update that. It was amazing how things had changed from two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. Obviously, we had a recession in there and felt like we needed to do something to, to re-energize what we were doing in the, in the county and the city. And then, over that period of time, Business Attraction and Expansion Program, this is the number-one thing that we focus on. During that time, we have facilitated, we aren't saying that we created these jobs, we're saying we facilitated the creation of these jobs through the program, two thousand new jobs in the county, sixty-six million dollars in new wages. Let me point out that that is a number that is the first-time wages, as those continue on, they just continue to multiply. And three hundred and three thousand dollars in new personal property investments for these projects. All despite losing twenty-five hundred state jobs in Cole County since two thousand and seven. Twenty-five hundred jobs lost out of a workforce of, I believe, starting at that time, about sixteen thousand five hundred. We're down to about fourteen thousand state jobs in Cole County now. But despite that, as, as Bill pointed out in that earlier graphic, the, the county average wage is up eighteen percent. The county total wages are up seventeen percent, and we're now over two-point-one billion dollars in wages paid in jobs in Cole County. The Cole County Appraised Value, which is a very leading indicator of your economy, is up fifteen percent since two thousand and seven. The county taxable sales, which basically leads to your sales tax revenue for the city and county and the state, is up fourteen percent, even despite a dip that I think you probably saw in that, in that earlier graph in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. And county employment has risen to fifty-four thousand jobs from a low of about fifty-one thousand in two thousand and thirteen. One of the things we, as, as Bill mentioned, we have had a net increase in jobs since two thousand and thirteen, even despite the loss of county jobs. During that period when we were losing twenty-five hundred jobs, private sector employment grew almost three thousand jobs in Cole County during that same period of time. Wonder what it would be like in this economy if, if we didn't replace those jobs. As I think some of the speakers have indicated, we're a respected partnership from outside business and site selection consultants. The Missouri Partnership was the state economic development marketing wing of state government. The Missouri Department of Economic Development, the Office of Administration, and obviously, the Missouri Economic Development Council. We don't lay back, we take a leadership role, you guys probably know that. Sometimes it makes fans, and sometimes it, it, it makes foes. But the bottom line is, we continue to do that, we facilitate thinking outside the box. Heartland Port Authority is one of those examples, the Special Olympics of Missouri Project is one of those examples. We actually took that project from the City of Columbia and brought it to Jefferson City. Almost single-handedly, through the work of the Chamber as facilitator, the city, and the county, all chipping in. That was a great partnership project. And then again, in the two thousand and ten Economic Development Strategic Plan, over two hundred volunteers worked on nine action teams to develop ideas for the community. These are just a few of the things that have still had life during that, and in some way, form, or shape, have continued to be growing part of the community.
I want to talk about that leadership role just a little bit, I want to jump in. That's why, again, these Cole County residents are here, because they don't just go to meetings and sit there, they actually roll up their hands and they get stuff done. Whenever we call on our Chamber members to create something, they create it, they get it done, and it's a community full of leaders. All these people have other jobs where they could be at, but they're here in support of this.
Thanks, Bill. Turn it over to Mr. Brian.
Well, thank you, I appreciate this, and, and I really am very excited to be here, to be partnering with this and have the opportunity to kind of talk to you about the credentials of RJ Share and Associates. Regrettably, Randy, the principal of our firm, could not be here, he had a meeting, could not be rescheduled, so he sent me here to kind of talk a little bit about it. I know that in one of the slides, you mentioned that we're all residents of Cole County, I, I'd like to maybe dive into that a little bit and say to you that RJ Share and Associates is probably one of the firms with the deepest roots in Cole County that you could possibly look to, to provide government services for the county. I know Randy's family came here from the eighteen fifties from Germany, settled on the western edge of Jefferson City. My family came here from eighteen, in eighteen fifty-four, from Botterslo, Germany, settled in the area that is around Taos. I am a sixth-generation Cole County, and Randy's heavily involved with the, he's the president of the Friends of Missouri Governor's Mansion, and he's on the breakfast rotary, I'm involved, I do sports, my local parish school board, I'm on the Jefferson City Area Convention and Bidders Bureau and the YMCA board, so we are very involved with this, it's truly an honor and a privilege to be considered for something that you're so heavily and personally invested in. So that's kind of what our firm is and who we are, we have, as I mentioned, over fifty years of experience lobbying in legislature. We are a full-service firm, we can be available to you all at a moment's notice, and we, we certainly work to, to provide whatever services that our clients are needing, and whatever level of communication that they need within the Capitol. What we would do, provide weekly reports and as-needed communication to the commission, to, you know, detail what's going on in Capitol, get feedback from you all, and relay that messaging. You all will have direct access to us, I know this is a partnership, but the, the way we view it is we would be working directly with you all to provide the services that you all are wanting in that RFP, and so you all will be communicating with us directly. And, and very candidly, you are gonna be the best advocates for contacting the local Cole County delegation. What we can do is help facilitate those conversations in a timely manner with the best information possible, so you all can, can talk to them with all the details that you need. But then we would also carry that message to the leadership, to key committee chairs and folks outside of the area, also the executive branch of government, and make sure that they understand the needs and wishes of, of the Cole County, of the Cole County Commission. You have general county issues, every year, they come up, you have taxation, funding issues, property tax, whatever the case may be. You have kind of county governance issues that we deal with every year, that would be the interaction that you all have with various offices of county government, posting legal notices, any sort of legislative attempt that interferes with your all's ability to govern Cole County the way that you best see fit. And I apologize, I'm talking fast, I'm pretty sure I'm up on the twenty minutes, so I'm gonna do this. Where are we at here? Oh, easements, right-of-way, you know, those things come up every year that you all deal with, particularly cable utilities, telephone companies seeking access, so we'd be there, available to help with that. And then also working with the Missouri Association of Counties to make sure there's a cohesive message coming from all parts and your all's perspective is related. The economic development incentive programs, that's one of the areas that would make this partnership really unique. You know, we really think that having the Chamber available with its members and your all's constituents of Cole County to talk about the attacks that happen every year on local option programs to develop, you know, businesses, whether it be TSTI, TDDs, NIDS, SIDS, you know, the whole alphabet of economic development programs. They're under attack every year, we think that this may be a, a unique opportunity to, to work on those. Budget opportunities, you know, the state funding admittedly is, is probably not robust at the moment, but there's always opportunities. There's always funding measures that are out there that the state's looking to do, and that we could work with the county to make sure that if they're poised to take advantage of that, if it, if it falls within what you all are wanting to do, or if there's a special project that needs funding from the state to the county, we could certainly work with you all on that. And then you have, you know, special projects, I kind of put that, the miscellaneous category, I mean, there could be a whole host of things that are specific to the county and the surrounding area. I know land easements is an issue that's been dealt with a lot in our recent past, we could certainly facilitate that and help the county get that message across. MODOT cost share, infrastructure, for infrastructure is, is something that's out there. Work with the Coalition on the poor, try to find funding, if that's the route the county wants to go. And then, you know, for instance, partner with Lincoln University, say if they want to expand a, a program out into the county area, we could certainly work with them and work with budget leaders to try to get that done for the county. So, I did that very quickly, I apologize for being speedy, but I do want to be respectful of your time.
You did great, Brian, thank you. Okay, one last slide, basically, looking forward to the partnership. These are the issues that we think are hot on the agenda, obviously, workforce development, we've talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it. It is the number-one current issue for economic development. These are three of the areas that we have been attempting to and will try to focus on in the future. Funding for the port and private sector funding, both, both kinds for the Port Authority. Funding for the port and private sector funding, both both kinds for the Port Authority. Reinvigorate project security, I won't go into the details of that, you guys have heard that in the past, it kind of hit a pause button, and I think we're ready to get back into that. And then obviously identifying growth opportunities in areas surrounding Jefferson City. You have in front of you some support letters that were written either to the commission as a whole or Sam as the presiding commissioner. These are six letters that you have in front of you from businesses that have have located or expanded in the community. And obviously, the executive director, president of the Missouri Partnership, wrote a nice letter talking about how how well that the partnership works with with the Chamber and the local partnership. Close to, close to twenty minutes. Okay. If you'd like to answer any questions.
No, I know, and I don't know if this is lobbying, but you know, Chris brought up a grant that potentially on law enforcement that, can you help us with grants too? I mean, there's grants out there that could probably benefit the county if we knew about them.
Sure, yeah, sure, sure we can. Did you, did you look into that, that one that they were referring to before?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's one of those programs that I think was, to a certain extent, earmarked, I don't know that I would call it a grant exactly. I think that the state had a, had an idea in mind already.
Okay. Well, anytime we can get extra money, it helps.
Well, I would like to add that Randy was instrumental in getting the Special Olympics down here from Columbia by seeing a state program that could facilitate that project, which was the Missouri Government Finance Board, Commission for Experts. And so we were able to work with the Chamber and relocate the project down here and still keep those experts in play. That was kind of a unique opportunity that we recognized.
I don't really have any questions, I appreciate y'all keeping it brief. I know we've seen some of these reports before, so, thanks, and happy anniversary, by the way, so, throw that in there.
Birthday?
Birthday?
Birthday.
My wife, my wife would argue with you about being married as long as I'm old.
That's what happens, you already knows at five-thirty in the morning. Okay, well, birthday, then, so, I didn't bring any cake for her.
Thank you guys so much, so much for your time. Obviously, I I hope you understand that we believe in partnerships. We believe that it's very difficult for any silo to get anything done, that we have to work together to move our community forward. You know, the people here, we we live here, we work here, we have kids that go to school here, we have companies that are based in Cole County, and we care about the growth of Cole County. For us, it's a lot more than a paycheck, it's about doing the right thing, and it's about growing the whole pie. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, thank you all. Thanks, everybody, for being here today, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is he the new mayor? Is he the new mayor showing up late like that? He snuck in like you.
You're making a look at it. It's going to take more than...
You did, we at least one selfie.
Thanks, Karen.
No selfies? Jeff cried, Jeff cried last time.
Happy birthdays, all of you.
I can't keep track of it.
Facebook's terrible.
Thank you, thank you.
I saw something on that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. This is a very long, long meeting.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah. Hopefully, we're about done. I know better than to think that.
Okay, we will go back to our new business discussion of the capital sales tax.
Were we talking about it?
I don't know.
I put that on the agenda, just kind of go over some of that, see where we're at. See if we got some other projects that we need to add or... We kind of, we got the Carnegie Building, we got the Health Building, but we still some money in there to do some projects yet, I believe.
For eighteen, you mean?
Yeah, or, I mean, may not get done in eighteen, but just kind of keep planning there.
It's probably a good time, because again, the budget is due into the auditor by September one. Most of your departments have already put their budgets out there in the S and A and have emailed you guys a sheet of their changes or things that they anticipate will happen next year. So Chris said something about capital courthouse, fifteen percent sales tax, so as of the twenty-second, kind of did a rough count of the carryforwards of the, from last year to this year, the interests that we've received so far, and and then also the taxes that we've collected. So the balance, that date is wrong, I'm sorry, is about two-point-two million. And then anticipated for the remainder of the year, still sales tax and still Brooks Park Grant, we haven't gotten all the money in, is what I see, so two-point-three. As of the August twenty-second, we've paid these different invoices, I didn't spell them all out, but these are things that we've paid out. Cash on hand right now is one-point-four. POs that are still out there, contracts that we know about, we're still doing, we still have payments to be made on, are these items here. And remaining balance for other projects, Brooks, we still owe that, we still have money in there for computers, I'm not sure where that nine-one-one equipment is, but...
So do we have money left?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm bottom-line person.
There you go. About a million, okay? These are some of the projects that are still out there that we haven't had approval to go out to bid on, some of these are priority A, as far as Greg is concerned.
So we got what we wanted to get done in eighteen already?
As to when we met earlier this year, you gave us a list of things we wanted to bid out, and we're working on those, we still have some of those projects still not completed, our general right now had a bid in for the...
Yeah, I mean, but we already got them spoiling for...
Right.
In the amounts, so... So then we do have some more capital improvements that we can do?
Yes.
Or go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, we're still going to try to do the landscaping.
Landscaping around the courthouse and a little bit around the Carnegie Building.
Okay, so what do we got? Do we have an estimate on that? Because we're going to have that drawn up yet, too. I know I mentioned you about getting State Tech, but I haven't heard anything.
Right.
I know they're probably pretty busy, too, especially doing free stuff.
Yeah, I should be getting a proposal, or a proposal from CNPS here soon on the design work and stuff, so.
It's at the top of the list there, so...
Anyway, there's that hauling of that old fuel and that tank, you know, getting all that removed, are we still working on that, or?
I'm not sure where we're at with that.
We're waiting for you guys to tell us whether you want that to be bid out or not.
Okay. And then, I mean, there's some smaller items that we might be able to take care of, I mean, obviously, we don't want to do a lot, but I mean, there's there's some things there that we could get done before the end of the year, possibly.
Well, we get the fuel tank, haul the fuel tank and that, and then we'll be ready for the landscaping around the courthouse.
And then you have some lighting there, and then ceiling of a parking lot, you know, the drive, ceiling of the driveway at the courthouse.
Yeah.
Not sure what that is, but...
Just putting that sealer on top of it, right here.
In the parking lot or the driveway?
Well, it's drive-through here and this parking lot here.
Okay, both.
Yeah, and then what's over at the Carnegie Building, that'd have to be cut off and
And you did have the health, some of that health stuff that you had in there, did you have the grant that we got to to offset some of that?
Yeah, some of that comes out, and we're putting that through GR in order to get that grant money.
Okay.
The ones that we don't have the final numbers on yet is that bid that came in this weekend, or came in Saturday or Friday.
Thursday, and then Thursday's on the agenda today.
Oh, it is on the agenda.
So some of that will come out of this Capitol and go into GR that you have listed here? Is that what you're saying?
No, the bills will be split, so the portion that's funded by the grant will run through GR and get reimbursed to GR, and then the remaining portion will come out of sales tax.
So I guess I'm asking, do you have the totals in here in this Capitol for that? And so only half of it's going to come out of that?
Some and some not. Like the pavement or the parking lot, I have the whole forty-nine thousand. Part of that will be paid for thirty percent, thirty-point-six percent will be paid for out of the grant. So, yeah, it could save a little bit more.
So we'll have some extra money in sales tax because of that, that's what I was getting at, okay? I mean, obviously, it takes a little while to get this stuff bid out.
Right.
Done, so, you know, and then next year, obviously, we got close to a million dollars in there now, next year we'll bring in another, what, seven-hundred thousand, more than that?
More than that, a little bit. So, yeah, whenever you guys want us to get started on bidding out, we can sure do it, doesn't mean it's officially approved until you're done. We talked about the generator situation at the new Health Department, right? It can't be moved to the, the old Health Department can't be moved to the new one. Maybe we can use that generator yet at the Pranger family, and then talk about maybe even doing the pigtails again there. So...
Yeah, when it's at the current Health Departments, it's two-way, three-phase. The new Health Department's four-sixty-three-phase, which, and in time you separate everything out, is not worth it. It's easier to put it down at Pranger, power everything at Pranger, just let it run.
Wasn't it purchased with the Public Health Infrastructure Grant?
I don't know, I wasn't here at that time.
I wasn't either, but...
It may have been, I could check that out.
I think it was bought by a Missouri Foundation for Public Health Infrastructure Grant.
Maybe, we just need to check that, if we have to give it back, we better give it back, if not, we got the Pranger Center. So I was trying to find, did you email about the tank system thing? You said you were waiting on us to decide, or we had just talked about it before and we haven't gotten you an answer?
We had talked about it, and we were just going to wait on it till further direction from you guys.
To find out if we had money?
Well, we did take it out before we do the landscaping.
Yeah.
So...
I'd say get rid of it, get it taken care of, and get it off that list, if we've got money to do it, let's proceed. I'm just one of...
Yeah, I agree, I agree, get rid of it, you know, fill in the hole we need to.
Yeah, before something happens to it, we have to pay a lot of money.
And maybe you want to go into that generator at the courthouse, too? I mean, I don't know how that all ties in.
Yeah, we'll just take it all out, it's not, nothing there to save anymore.
So is that what that is?
You have a small generator to power IT and stuff, right?
We'll have to figure out something in there to do for IT for right now. I know we had talked about moving them at one time over to the jail, but I don't know if that was still a discussion or not.
Is that what that is, currently, twenty-five thousand? Is that to remove the current generator?
I think that was the cost to put a new one, or to rebuild that one in there. Been too long, I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
I'm just, I mean, we've talked about these pigtails and generators forever, and I just don't see the need to have them anywhere, really. I mean, obviously, the law enforcement center, but we can get IT moved over there and something to, so we can get stuff shut down, but, I mean, even out of Christie's building, I mean, she's got some drugs that you need to...
Or vaccines.
Right, but you got an alarm on that, too, and so if the power goes off, you got a certain amount of time. And Michael's got a few kids down there at any one time, so, you know, if it's if it's a major ordeal, we can, we'll find a place to house them somewhere else. So that's a lot of money to spend on...
And worse comes the worst, we could always just take a little four-thousand-watt generator or...
Exactly.
...some extension cords and plugger for doing that.
Yeah, Chris thought that one, or we take them with St. Mary's, because we have an agreement.
Sure, sure.
We have alternatives.
So delete Christie's offer there for generator. I'd be more concerned with the Pranger Center.
I didn't really have hers on.
Oh, we'll delete it anyway.
Don't add it.
Preemptive deletion.
Not now.
But juvie, where I'd be more concerned, I don't know if that's just as easy as just moving kids.
Well, we haven't had it down there in how long? We haven't had a generator there since it's been open, so...
We've talked about this since I've been on here, I've never done anything, so...
I mean, not only you have a generator, but that's just the pigtails, thirty grand, just to hook it up.
Yeah, especially if you can't use that.
I don't disagree with that.
I don't, but, that's...
But that'd be something that you'd think we'd be able to get some kind of grants for or something, I mean, that's for kids, it's not kids that are necessarily troublemakers, that's helping kids that are down there not on their own, that they can send down there, you know, more protection than anything.
And worse comes the worst, if we can take the one at the old Health Building and put it down there on that pad, I don't know what it costs to move it and wire it up to transfer.
Yeah, but I mean, then you got to, you got to test it, you got to run it, you know, you got, I mean, it's just all the extra stuff, and so, and it's all a what-if. And I mean, so, yeah, there's, there's eight or nine, ten kids down there during the day when school's going on, but there's only a couple kids there that stay the night.
Yeah, there's two right now, that's it.
Yeah, so...
I guess we need to talk with Mike and see if he's got some kind of plan.
Yeah.
Because we could technically take it off the list if he has some kind of action plan.
Right.
And he may have something.
So what do you think about the copy machine down there? Debbie wants a new copy machine.
It's very aggravating. And anybody could attest.
How old is?
I think you could attest, you're nine, you were going to break it the other day.
Yeah.
I did kick it last week. It made it work.
And that's just an estimated amount? I would get somebody like Brian to help me figure that out.
That include the service plan, all that good job stuff?
I think that's...
Service plan's around about thirty dollars a month.
With all our other service plans that way out?
So is it still possible to move IT over to Sheriff's Building where we'd have a generator already there, or do we need to have more discussions on that?
I have some more discussion on it, so I think it's possible. We went through and and kind of surveyed the area that we were looking at moving into, and it's a lot smaller than what we're currently in. And so GIS is a consideration, you know, with that as well. Sheriff's freed up like an additional office, too, so that might be a possibility, but I just think we need to go through and and kind of lay it out and see what I have to work with. I've got some software I can do that, so that discussion will probably...
So the discussion is, is can you, we move you and Melissa and everybody over there with all the hardware and stuff?
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, and so I think there's some spaces available.
Well, I think that would be a good thing to talk about, especially once since we're getting rid of the generator and possibly the generator at the courthouse, and we're doing something different there. And then maybe we'd knock out some of them other smaller ticket items, I mean, if we need to do some lighting, ceiling of the driveways, and then the circuit clerk, she's going to have to come beg for that, so, anyway.
Well, that's the actual stuff that Judge beat him, and then Judge Joyce had sent an email about. So I put it under circuit, I'm sorry, but it's really...
So we've already approved it, or no?
No.
Okay.
The one, the last I understood was you wanted Brian to check it out for the computer equipment that they were actually buying. And I'm not sure if Brian's had time to get with circuit or...
Judge just sent me the specs this morning, so...
So what do you guys think? Talk about it again, or?
Probably just make decisions and...
So what about the ceiling of the driveways and stuff? I mean, it'd be nice to get that done before winter, probably to prevent any more, you know, especially since we had the approach done out here, you know, try to get some of that done, I don't think it'll be affected by the landscape over at the courthouse, so...
Seal it and put the tar in the cracks to help it survive.
Are those in order of importance, Greg?
What's that?
Are those in your order of wishes more?
They've been moved around, there, there's a new list that I sent you guys, an update They've been moved around, there, there's a new list that I sent you guys, an updated list roughly.
It's incorporated into this?
Yeah. Easy to get sealed before we lose it too much more. It's, sand is already starting to come up out of it, so if we get it sealed, we might get another five years out of that.
Okay.
And I asked maybe Larry and Larry, but I think we get sealer on it, it lasts a little longer.
Go with it.
Yeah, maybe three, I don't know.
Once you get two, move.
All right.
Before somebody changes their mind.
Did I hear two on the copy machine?
Let's revisit the elevator, I mean, obviously, that's pretty much...
That's, yeah, you know, that's depending on what you guys wanna do with the...
So that's Carnegie lighting for the parking lot, is that just getting better lighting out there?
Yeah, there's no lighting out there now, it's dark and...
I thought we did that years ago. Down in the pit, you mean?
Yeah, there's nothing down there.
Okay, I'm good.
You said that's pretty well shot, too.
I thought we had that a long time ago.
No, there's nothing down there and I've had several of Mark's employees when they're leaving at night to get some lights down there because it's dark and scary.
Okay, let's, let's move forward on getting a bid for that. I'm, I'm good. You guys good?
I'm good, yeah.
Okay, to you.
I'm just watching, see how red-faced Debbie gets here before we decide on a commissioned copy machine.
Okay.
I did kick it the other day.
Did you?
Yes.
So you wanna have Debbie at least get prices on the copy machine, or, I mean, not saying we're gonna approve it, but at least look at...
Yeah, I think we need to move on it because I had a pretty good argument going with an N and M machine the other day. I'm not so sure, I didn't lose that argument.
Okay, and then maybe we can get moving IT to the Sheriff's Building on, in a conversation, maybe coming up next week or the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, next couple of weeks for sure.
Okay.
I think the ones that we have highlighted there, let's move with them. They're pretty easy projects to get off the list. I don't have a problem carrying money forward with some of these other big-ticket things. I think we need to look at, if we are gonna move Brian over to the Sheriff's Building, Law Enforcement Building. We need to kinda get some idea on that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm good, let's just knock some of those little things off there and get them off the list and then we can, you know, during budget and stuff, we can start talking about other priorities.
As you can tell, as the priority list gets further down, B C, three, five years out, the price tag gets very heavy.
You go back up a little bit there?
One thing that's not on this new list is HVAC out at Larry and Larry's building, it's about Shaw.
It's right there.
Okay.
I incorporate it, must have.
Okay.
So what's that Carnegie parking lot repaved?
Repave it all, it's all busted up and coming to cracking.
Okay.
Down below, or that's up here on top?
Both sides.
All of it? That's ours, or is that part of the alley?
That I can't get an answer out of. Because Sam was asking...
We, we can't even get the city to say that they will, the alley, it should be a city alley and they, they won't...
They don't even...
They don't do anything with it when we have snow or ice, we've had people fall, and it's like...
I don't know if that's still considered as, that was a street between the Carnegie building and next door, or if that was just an alley?
I bet if we close it off, we'll get some answers.
So what do you think about trying to get, I mean, obviously, we need to get an answer, but maybe trying to see about doing that Carnegie?
Do it all at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, because we got the health building doing something out there too, so just try to get some of these...
Come back with the...
Yep.
Nurse Larry and Larry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that one.
Because with running the list on it didn't help in any kind of...
Right. Okay. Kinda go with those and then come back and visit with Brian on the, the move for IT. And then the rest of them, we'll just wait till budget time. Good?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a little money left in there then, in case something comes up, it's, it's only August. So you got your copier.
Merry Christmas. Happy birthday.
Well, you didn't get it yet.
No, but Merry Christmas, Happy Birthday.
Well, yeah, but we haven't approved the purchase yet.
Yeah.
We said go, go, go find what you want and then bring it back. Tell you to buy something half that nice. Okay, where are we at?
Okay. Signing of surplus titles.
We have actually four vehicles that the sheriff is wanting to sell at surplus. Are the first ones issued, we've done. And then we also have one that Juvenile is wanting to surplus as well. Has the Sheriff's Department transferred one of their slightly used ones to them. So, so there's actually five surplus titles to sign.
Good.
Yes.
Move we sign the surplus titles.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bid discussion award twenty eighteen dash thirty-two, health department improvements.
We got three responses for the two projects that were bid under one bid, for the restroom, the addition of the shower, and then the replacement of windows. We did a base bid of five and then the option for seven. You should have the numbers attached there. If you look at it as an overall bid for projects one and two, the low bid was GBH Builders at twenty-three thousand nine hundred thirty-one for the base bid. And then twenty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-one if you opted to do the extra two windows.
What do we have budgeted for that?
We did, and this was an extra that came up.
Okay, I thought we included the windows in there, but...
I thought I saw eight earlier.
We were down, we went down from twelve was all, and then we went down to maybe five windows versus eight, so...
So what that grant and stuff you got, where are we at on total? Because I know we had a bottom line, we were trying to keep it within.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're still under, I would say.
Two point two, two hundred twenty-four thousand right now. It changes as I get in voices.
That's what the grant taken out?
Yes. These two together, basically, whether, we have a contract for them, our PO out there, and these are just still estimates that I don't have the bills for yet.
All right, totally lost. So where are we at?
Two hundred twenty-four. With all the rebates and with all the grant money taken out.
Where were we supposed to be at?
We were trying to stay under two hundred, but I don't know what all we've added in here though, too.
Because at one point we had, it was two hundred or something with some grants, and so, two hundred with the grant taken out, or...
So some of that, so some of that, some of it's, I added a washer and dryer, shower and a bathroom, is that part of this?
This is what we're talking about today.
Right, I, I get that, but I mean, you know...
So we were at two hundred?
Right.
And then with the grant, we were at two hundred eighty-two.
Right.
So does that two twenty-four have the eighty-two taken out, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
All right. Debbie, I appreciate your spreadsheets, I just can't always follow them. No offense, now, now I see your numbers, so...
So we added the forty-seven for the parking lot, we added the moving expenses, is that, you got that in there Debbie, or we don't know?
It's right there.
Okay.
So the one thirty-two plus the ninety-two?
Two twenty-four.
Plus eighty-two.
Well, minus eighty, that's already, that's already out there.
Yeah, she's already got the eighty-two out. So we're at two twenty-four right now.
That's right. But with the eighty-two, it would be at three hundred and seven thousand.
Oh, yeah.
And there's other...
And the twenty from the...
Twenty.
And the rebate.
She's got some of the windows in there already.
I got twelve on the windows, I saw somewhere.
Right, so she's got twenty in there.
So the two twenty-four includes twelve for the windows and eight for the shower.
So basically, if we did all this, we would add six thousand to that, right? Because you got twenty in there right now. This has just kinda opened up a can of worms, I mean, we just... The good thing is, is Christie's building all these relationships in the community.
Well, the windows, when Greg showed me those, holy crap, I mean, that's, it's...
There's five for sure that need to be replaced, but if you wanna keep them all stuck in the same, replace the seven, so...
They gotta be when you got, when you got space between them.
Well, I think we should just get it all done.
I, I do too.
I mean, I think they need to shower, you know, people go out and inspect stuff and they come back and, I tell them what they got all over their clothes or whatever, and so...
You can award the two projects together or separately if you want. And then when you did aside, the five windows or the seven windows.
Thoughts, Jeff?
Yeah, along the lines of just get it done, where are we at, where's the money gonna come from? Same place all the rest of us come from?
Yeah, capital.
Yeah.
So do we have to do all to one? Because the project two is gonna be cheaper.
You could award them together or separately. They were bid under the same bid, but they're separate projects. I think it's like fifteen hundred dollars difference or so.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, now I'm seeing the project one and project two alternate bid. Does that mean that they reduce the price if we gave them everything? Or is that just the total of all three?
That's just the totals, yeah. Right.
Okay. So...
GBH is the cheaper for projects one and two combined. Twenty-three thousand nine hundred thirty-one for five windows, twenty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-one for seven windows. So they're gonna be the cheapest if they get projects one and two. Theoretically, you could do the low bid for project one, which is the restroom, twelve thousand five hundred to GBH. And then depending on if you did five or seven windows, you could use Mag Alley, and it'd be a little cheaper if you wanted to go that route.
Well, that's the way I would go if I was gonna do all the windows. Why would we go to the same one? If it's gonna cost more? So I would do GBH for the restroom part and then whichever, if we're gonna do the windows, whichever project two we pick. If I'm understanding that right, I mean, we don't get a discount if we give it all to...
Correct.
ABC or...
Correct, it's just totals, there's no discount for...
Okay. Was it all one bid, or...
It was one bid, it's still in there that we could award it basically as a whole or break it up, so it was just kind of your prerogative.
I mean, the only thing that I see is that GBH would be at ten days for the windows.
Right.
So if we got twenty, I'm fine with it. Are they the same windows? Did we get the windows, or just installing, or they the same thing?
We put, at the pre-bid, we talked, I don't recall it at the look, but we talked about the specs, they had to be, whatever you guys talked about was reflected in there. So they should be comparable, I don't know if they're the exact same, but they should be comparable.
There are differences, so that's, that would be the only concern, is I'd like to see what windows they're offering. But we do have twenty days.
If you want me to get the window specifics, we can come back next week.
I'd be curious. Or did you email that to us, what the bid package, is that on, we can go online, look at it real quick?
No, it's not on, you have, I think, just the bid tab.
I'd be more after just award the whole thing to GBH.
Yeah, I think we need to get the windows in before...
We could tell them that our preference was for them to have the work done by October first.
Well, and they all can accomplish that, you know, as long as we get moving.
Depending on availability of the windows too.
Right. Because it, uh, GBH says install windows for weeks from time of material order.
I'm sure they're all the same way too.
You want to see what the windows fact that they submitted, or did they even submit that, or?
No.
They didn't?
We didn't ask for it though, in their defense, I mean, it's not like they...
Basically, what I, it was a storefront, it was a storefront. Simple, easy, built there on site, fit the hole. Yeah, reflective rise, low E.
So they're gonna have somebody else do that? A Brady's or a Mark's or somebody, I mean, or whoever that does storefront windows.
That would be easy for them to do, put it in, build it, and do the returns on the inside.
What would that be under? On your side?
What'd you say?
What would that be under? Building maintenance, repair?
General construction, probably.
General construction.
That one. I think that was the first and only addendum, there should just be one.
They're on here backwards, they got the older ones on there first. You're just here to confuse me. Don't know how true that is, huh? Health department improvements.
So it's just a double pane, insulated?
Yeah, low E.
Yeah, storefront.
Storefront.
Lemon frame.
Lemon frame, just like we did out here. Connie here makes them. There's several companies out there.
I move we award project one and project two alternate bid to GBH.
Second. I'm just looking at their title. I wanna get it done before...
All right, call the vote there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get...
Nay.
Can we get a...
They're not gonna let me vote.
Contract pending Jill's approval, and then I'll get that together.
So you want us to sign the contract?
Well, I don't have it because I didn't know exactly how that would turn out. So if we can approve it and then we just say pending Jill's approval, so then that way we can get Sam to sign it and get that to them to get the order rolling.
You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I move with that we sign the contract with GBH Builders for the health department improvements, project one and project two alternate bid, pending council approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Even though I lost. Still love you guys.
We love you too, Jeff.
This was supposed to be your special one. Island in the counter, the cabinet on Saturday.
Good.
I guess they measured for the countertops yesterday, so there's a lot of that too. So now they'll go back and finish the floor, right?
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, bid discussion award twenty eighteen dash thirty-three, propane provision and service.
We got bids from Three Rivers and Feral Gas. Three Rivers is lower, dollar sixteen per gallon. Their tanks are out there as it is, so the recommendation is to continue with Three Rivers propane.
I move that we award propane provision and service to Three Rivers Propane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, now, thank you, Jen.
Yes, Larry?
I'd just like to thank Brian, give him kudos for his words last night. Thanks for all for creating the bandwidth. We can definitely tell the difference out there in our offices on the internet, so I know it was aggravating for him last night, but kudos to Brian.
Good job, Brian.
So you guys will be a lot more efficient and get a lot more done?
Yeah.
Of course.
Okay, you got anything else to come before us, before we go into closed session?
We got a ton of emails to get to, that's why we did the closed session.
We do have one other thing, so we have a ambulance that's out of service due to a...
Wireless access point?
Yeah, wireless access point.
That's different than the Cradle Point?
They're one and the same.
So we have two of them out of service, right?
So...
Thought that was two.
Obviously, it's not on the agenda, but we need to get this ambulance back in service, so I think it falls under emergency. So, yeah, so we need to figure out how to get a Cradle Point ordered or whatever, so we can get it back in service. So, obviously, it's not on the agenda, but we need to get this ambulance back in service, so I think it falls under emergency, so, yeah, so we need to figure out how to get a Cradle Point ordered, or whatever, so we can get it back in service.
So what we found is, so Unit 104 has the Cradle Point is dead, right? We can try to get it repaired, we can replace it with a Cradle Point, or we can go to the MG90s, so the difference between the Cradle Point and MG90s, the MG90 is a FirstNet approved, and the only FirstNet approved I'm aware of, that incorporates Band fourteen. Band fourteen is going to be a public safety only band, it'll be in the county within a year, is what AT&amp;T has told me. The other thing that Cradle Point doesn't do is, so FirstNet has run off the AT&amp;T system, and then of course Verizon, two different bands, one's a GSM, one's a CDMA. Where coverage is bad for the GSM, then you would have the CDMA pickup, right, so you'd have a dual band process. Cradle Points don't do that, at least the ones that we have. They're all or nothing, correct?
Correct.
So, with the MG90s, you have both cards in there, one goes down, the other one immediately picks back up, so as it switches back and forth into the process, so that's one benefit to it. The other side of it is, is that right now what we're seeing is, we can't keep connectivity one way or reason or another, and we're, we're trying to figure out what that is. Right now, today, we have two ambulances that cannot be seen in the system, plus the one that's out of service, because it's just completely dead. Like, you were over there yesterday, dealing with two or three of them.
The, so the, the problem is, is the number of software applications required to keep the connectivity going in each ambulance. So some of these, so, from what I, the, you know, from what I've been exposed to it, they have two or three, possibly four different variables in that mix that causes interruptions in service. At, in any, any one of them, so I spend a lot of time troubleshooting one package or the other, and so yesterday, I was over there and I looked at, they call it the AVL, right, Automatic Vehicle Locator. So I talked to, I tried to stay over there, but I had too many other things going on, where I had to come back until Zerker called me back, so they'd give me some things to try on it. But, the amount of service calls that I've done over there over the past several months, there's, there's got to be a better way, because right now, I would say you're, they're averaging, averaging probably about five to ten calls a week. And so, I mean, that would be good if you had an IT department, I guess you do, but, 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 you know, the thing about it is, is, is that if you put a stable platform in, then you get stable results. And some of those things were probably less expensive, you know, as far as how they were, why they were put in, but not necessarily would fit like what the need is. Does that make sense? So, so anyway. Cradle Point people have told me also that that product is end of life. So in other words, they don't manufacture that one anymore. So they're, they're, they are willing to offer a maintenance plan on, over the next two years, but after that, you're going to revisit it again. So, so I think that with, and this is my opinion, from a technology standpoint, I think that if you reinvest in the Cradle Point, then you're already investing in something that's been, that particular model's been obsolete, already been put in obsolescence. So, I would hate to see like a reinvestment in that when we actually need to go to something better than what we have.
So the MG90s are, they're just coming out, right, so they're six months to a year on the market, so they're not going to be at their end of life process. They just got certified by FirstNet to do that, so they're, they are more expensive. They do offer more capability, so you're kind of, you know, and the idea would be is, with every new truck that we get, we would automatically put them in, so the retrofit back is more expensive, because we've already purchased the mounts and all those things, and the wiring and the stuff for the Cradle Point side of it. Going forward, we would have to buy that if we would Cradle Point, or if we went the MG90s through Sierra Wireless. So, that cost at the end of the day is going to be about a four hundred dollar difference for the actual modem itself. All the other stuff is very comparable, comparable cost-wise. But because now we're in the process of where, at least on 104, we've got to do something to get these trucks back in service, and we're just spent thirteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars, I think it was, for the server upgrade. If my trucks aren't online, it doesn't matter if they, if we spent that money or not, if you can't see them in the system, you can't, it's not going to pick them. So that, that system keeps them visible and connected. The other part of that is, it's not just dispatching, but if the Cradle Point is down, we can't fax in our twelve EKGs to activate a cath team, because that's how it gets transmitted, is it gets transmitted from the monitor to the truck, the truck then transmits it to the hospital for us. Without that connectivity, you can't activate cath lab. We ran this the other day, not that we didn't send it, but the doc didn't, the hospital hadn't sent it to the cath team, and the cardiologist won't activate his team until he sees the EKG period. So, there's a patient care component in that. My recommendation is, is instead of retrodoing the entire fleet right now, let's get one, let's try it. If it works, then we revisit the discussion of do we retrofit, but we need, I, I don't want to spend all of that money in one swoop until we make sure that this works, and then if it works, then let's have that conversation about what we need to do. Like, instead of going and dropping, right, to do the entire fleet with maintenance service and all that kind of stuff, currently we'd be fifty-one thousand to do everything. I don't think we go that route right now, I think that's, that would be ill advisable to me.
So they're around five thousand?
No, sir, so, those costs for you.
I thought you said fifty-one thousand to do them all?
Hundred and fifty-one, I think.
No, fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one.
So it's for, so it is.
Got twelve anymore?
You're talking about hardware?
Twelve.
For twenty of them, because right, you have to do, so there, there's twenty that we have to do, because supervisor vehicles get them, like, everything that is a response vehicle has to have that to, and connect into CAD. So it's for everything, it's fifty-one thousand three sixty-seven, sixty cents, with, for twenty of them, to put into all the vehicles that we would have.
So you're counting twenty of them?
Correct, but if you break it out.
Cyphering with about twelve.
Right, so if you break it out, the, just for the hardware and the extra mounting brackets and the new antennas and stuff that would require, that's one thousand six hundred forty-six dollars and four cents. Now, in this line item, and I don't know what it says, there's a two hundred ninety-nine dollar, and all it says is, new items, don't pick this line, missing item unquote will update pricing, so I've got to figure out what that part is. But if that's a necessitarian item, then that total would be nineteen forty-five. So, I don't think it is, because from what I'm looking at, the technology side, it shouldn't need whatever that two ninety-nine is, part of it. So if you do a service piece with it, right, that's two ninety-five for a year, if you want the two years of support with telemetry, that's a hundred nine dollars, right, so that's where those costs add up. So if you want everything on this quote per item, that'd be twenty-five sixty-eight a piece.
So that would give, if we do one of them, that would give 104 back in service, which is not service at all. Where's the other two at? You just can't find them, you said on?
So, right, so they're, the MDTs are, so the, the modems are not transmitting data, so CAD can't see them, so it's not going to select them, so we're going to work to see if there's a way to get it back.
But technically, we can, we can find out where they're at on the radio and say, where the hell you at, because we need you over here, and we can use them.
Unless they're in quarters, right, so if they're in quarters, they don't have, right, the radio wouldn't be with them.
That sucks. Now, you said they're dual band, or whatever, they'd have two cards in them, so we paying two?
So what you would do is?
Sets of service?
You, what you would do normally is, what you'll see is, you'll have FirstNet as your primary, and then you would do a data packet where all the ambulances.
So it's basically like they're carrying two phones?
Basically.
And that's going to be more per month, too, that's?
So you're right, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do the full unlimited on both, right, you would do the one, because FirstNet would be the primary, and it would only kick over to Verizon when there wasn't a strong enough signal, so you would basically share that data plan through all the ambulances at a lower pool amount.
Does this include the upgrade to the antenna as well?
Yes, sir, so it goes from a three-in-one to a six-in-one.
So we had two down at one time, so were you able to fix the one, or?
I've got, so the two that can't be seen on AVL right now, Zerker, I'm going to work with Zerker today on, to try to get those at least back up where they're visible again.
And it's not just that they can't be seen on AVL, they can't transmit that patient care data either, so I mean, when they're down, they're offline, because that's how our patient care reports are done, that's how the transmissions of the data are, so I mean, it does have an impact into the operations side of things.
I'm not sure that these things have worked well since we bought them. I mean, so, you know, once again, lowest is the best, so.
How quickly can?
I get, I get a call this morning while I was in here, and from the Sierra Wireless rep, and they said they're willing to work with us on getting us a unit to do our pilot with, so I get the impression we can do that right, right away.
I mean, I'd like to try this other device and see if it's much better and more reliable, and obviously, if that's the case, then maybe we switch to that route, even though it is more expensive, so.
The thing is, is so if it doesn't end up being the problem, that at least points us down a different direction, so that we, right, so we eliminate one possible issue, if it ends up being something else, at least we're not wasting money trying to fix all of it when we haven't identified. We know this one's dead, but we have other issues, let's try to figure out what those other issues are. Try to kill two birds with one stone.
Those are the only two options?
There are other options out there, there's no other option with the FirstNet capability that I've researched and found, so that's the only certified FirstNet Band fourteen currently on the market. I'm sure there'll be some more coming out at some point, but that's the only one I'm aware of.
I'm fine with trying one of the other ones. I don't think it's a bad idea, rather than suiting them all with that when you find out they're pieces of crap, too.
And we got to have it installed, too. I have no idea what that.
Well, what's Brian doing Saturday? He's off Monday, he's got all day. Well, he's got all day Monday, nobody's going to be very bothered. How come you're getting so red, Brian? Just kidding, calm down.
I'm on television.
You never been on Showtime? You never sent it?
I remember that.
All right, you got directions?
Yeah. Direction, then install is how much more?
So I don't know, so I, we, generally what we would do is go to, was it A and W here locally? My guess is you're probably looking at about eight hundred dollars-ish, I don't know, though, that's, that is me shooting off the top, because I, I have no idea.
Let's get some bottom line costs, and I mean, we can approve it, and if something comes in astronomical, then we can put the brakes on it. You all right with that? I mean, they got to be installed, not going to do much good riding around in a box.
Right, so we, I mean, obviously we need to get them, and we need to get them installed, and so it costs what it costs, but. So.
And if it comes back ridiculously expensive, I mean, there's other installers that, even if we have to drive it somewhere to get it installed outside of the county, depending on what their price coming back at, we can try that as well.
I'm good with just moving forward, because I think we need to get it back in service ASAP, yeah, so, anyway, if it's ridiculous cost, let us know, it's reasonable.
And we got the window fixed, right?
That got fixed, but I, they did have the mount with the stuff on the front, so they're driving to O.C. right now.
Okay, good?
Thank you.
All right, I could erase about seventy-two emails on that one.
Anything else?
No, I will remind you, the budgets are due to the auditor September one, so I'm just going to, as they come in and they're done, we're going to hold them, unless you guys want to have a, a discussion about what some of the departments have asked for. Some have definitely asked for more, and they've explained that, most departments have explained that, so.
When do they do the auditor?
September first, couple days here.
I got one piece of mail, I got another postcard from the Federal Aviation Administration Obstruction Evaluation Group, and we have the existing state Capitol building, I guess, is obstructing, obstruction. It's two hundred fifty-one feet above ground level, eight hundred and seventy-seven feet above mean sea level, so anybody, don't fly a plane into it.
On Rensley, what did we get figured out with that? We've been talking with Michael Keller about trying to get them scheduled.
We're going to come next week and.
It is on.
They're on the agenda.
And I, I've done the D and all that stuff, so we all just need to vote and sign. He could not come this week, and Harold couldn't either.
That was the last email I saw, or something, I didn't know if we got it moved.
Yeah, we've been, I've been emailing with them.
Okay, very good, that, that's all, that was one, Jeff, thanks.
We should have a party when.
Have mud running out there before they shut in here. No water in that thing right now, no.
Anything else, Jeff?
No.
No, I'm still catching up on some of these emails, go ahead and, we'll go into closed session, get them taken care of.
I may be going to closed session, Section Six, Ten Point Oh Two One, revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, Sub Thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Yes.